Sharon, ready?
Yeah, you can start. Down.
Good evening. On behalf of Colleen Green, Director of the DC Department of Housing and Community Development, I would like to thank you for joining the DHCD Public Hearing for the Fiscal Year 2026 Annual Action Plan, which is the document required by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. Before we begin, I would like to take some time to thank the staff from DHCD, the Department of Human Services, the Department of Health, and the DC Housing Authority for working together to write the annual action plan. I'd also like to thank the staff for all the hard work that goes in day in and day out, ensuring that district residents have the resources needed to produce secure, safe, and affordable housing. We do that through the public dollars that we're going to talk about this evening. The purpose for tonight's public hearing is for DHCD to present to the public the entitlement funds allocated by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year 2026. The agenda reflects the topics to be addressed during this hearing. Tonight, we will discuss the Community Development Block Grant Program, referred to as CDBG, the Housing Opportunity for Persons with AIDS Grant Program, referred to as HOPWA, the Home Investment Partnerships Program, referred to as HOME, the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, referred to as ESG. In addition, we'll be presenting information on the National Housing Trust Fund and the Recovery Housing Program. Upon conclusion of the presentation, the audience will have an opportunity to make a public statement regarding the document itself. Questions or comments which fall outside this realm can be addressed at the conclusion of the public hearing. I would like to begin by presenting an overview of the annual action plan. The annual action plan was developed through public input by the district stakeholders, the need for affordable housing, assistance to small businesses, and assistance to people living without a home, and services to people living with HIV/AIDS. The annual action plan concisely summarizes actions, excuse me, goals, activities, and specific federal and nonfederal resources that will be available to address the priority needs and specific goals that are outlined in a five-year consolidated action plan. The annual action plan unequivocally meets all statutory and regulatory requirements while presenting the community with a comprehensive plan detailing how the district would allocate entitlement funds based on community participation. The slide outlines when our participation occurred. So, the action plan is broken down into a needs assessment, which we had three public hearings plus a comment period. And now, the second part of the citizen participation is through the action plan itself, which has been posted to the agency's website. We will be submitting the plan to the HUD on April 16th. As I mentioned earlier, there are six funding sources that are entitlements, and we will talk about each of them. Can we, CDBG? One moment, please. All right, my apologies. So here are the allocations that we will be receiving in fiscal year 2026. A community development block grant is broken into entitlement funds, which end Section 108 loan guarantee. So, we will receive about $15 million in entitlement funds and $40 million in a section loan guarantee line of credit. HOPWA will receive approximately $12.8 million. HOME will receive approximately $5.8 million. Housing Trust Fund, which is at the national level, will receive approximately $3.1 million. Recovery Housing Program will receive $1.6 million. And the Emergency Solutions Grant will receive approximately $1.3 million. The funds mentioned are known as entitlement funds awarded by HUD. The funds that we use must align with specific goals outlined in the five-year consolidated plan and identified for use through this annual action plan. The next several slides will showcase the goals identified in the fiscal year 2026 action plan. The goals are achieved through the distribution of funds by the sister agencies based on their respective mission. Together, the sister agencies will use the resources to meet the goals that we have in our plan. Some of our goals are to pres- will be to preserve the existing supply of affordable housing, expand the affordable housing stock, strengthen homeownership tendency among households, foster small and local business development, and prevent and end homelessness. In addition, we will be using the goals to help persons living with HIV to live independently without stigma, providing immediate temporary housing assistance to homeless persons living with HIV, expanding housing available to persons living with HIV, assisting persons living with HIV to reach viral suppression and retain care by providing housing as a social deter- determinant, excuse me, of help, preventing single parents living with HIV from losing dependent children due to homelessness, and developing housing resources for persons living with HIV. As I mentioned, with CDBG, we will be using $40 million through the Section 108 program, and we will be using the $15 million to provide technical assistance to small businesses, housing counseling services, to help with facade and sma- small business technical assistance, and providing closing costs and down payment assistance to first-time homebuyers. HOPWA funds will use $12.8 million to provide rental assistance, short-term transitional housing, to finance facility-based housing operations, finance placement and permanent supportive housing units, and to provide supportive housing resource identification services and housing information. In HOME, we will receive approximately $5.8 million to help finance affordable housing developments and provide down payment and closing costs for first-time homebuyers. The, sorry, the $1.3 million for ESG funding will be used for the rapid rehousing program and to help pay for shelter operations. Housing Trust Fund dollars are, is a special category of financing of affordable rental housing, which assists people who earn up to 30% of the median family income. Recovery Housing Program is a specific program helping to stabilize people who are living with a substance use disorder. We are working with local providers to help provide services to people living in recovery and to maintain stable housing. That concludes the presentation. It is now time for, to start our public hearing. For the public hearing, Mary will walk around with a microphone to take testimony. We will start with the people in the room and then turn to the people who are on the, on the team's meeting. You'll have three minutes, and Sharon will be keeping time. If at the end of the, end of the list of people that we have that want to testify, if somebody else did not register but would like to testify, you can do so at that point. And as I said those directions, I realized that I just have a list and I don't know who's in the room and who's online. So, I'm just going to go down my list. Before, I like to do this, and it's, does anybody have any questions about the presentation itself before we go into comments? So, it's on the DHCD website, and I will pull up the website at the end for you to get the web address. Okay? Antoinette Wills? Would you like to testify? If you do and you're online, just raise your hand. So Sharon can unmute you, or you can unmute yourself, I believe. April Pravio? Hi, would you like to present?
Considering that the Rental Housing Act is still not passed, how does this impact what we're doing with the budget here?
So, the outline of the funds within the annual action plan are in line with the council's budget, with the budget. So, we have, the plan is a, the plan's a little bit hard to present because it's, our budget is based off of our current allocation and our projected income. And so, what we did was, this plan doesn't directly link to the rental act that you mentioned. That would be a different conversation. What this plan does address is of all the federal dollars, what we expect from these pots of money, where we plan on putting the pot of money by activity. So, for DHCD, we will use it for down payment assistance and closing costs. We will use it for small business assistance. We will use it to expand affordable housing. And we will use it for, maybe 30 seconds. Like housing counseling programs. So, but then, the Department of Human Services, they receive the ESG funds, and they'll use it on their shelters and rapid rehousing. And then Department of Health will use it on, they have like 10 programs that they take their money and divide it amongst.
Now, I asked that question very intentionally because, sure, what I've seen, I am a business owner. I'm a native Washingtonian, and I provide affordable housing across the city. I know that the agencies, they've always had a bit of an issue with talking to each other in order to coordinate some things that would be impactful across agency, cross-functionally. And where I have concerns, which I can't stand just bringing up only concerns, but I'm going to do it tonight. Where I have concerns is that as a business owner, and with what was presented tonight and with affordable housing, there may not be enough monies that are out there to help protect business owners like me to help prevent homelessness, possibly, because maybe the houses or the buildings, I have buildings, are run down, and there aren't any assistance from the city that will help. And there aren't enough funds for as many, especially in Ward 7 and Ward 8, where there are a lot of disparate needs, where housing is dilapidated, and we need, we need that. So, I just wanted to just voice that because it's a major concern, and I would love to contribute and help, but it's a very, very small pack for a lot of people.
It is. But this is just a small part that we are talking about today.
Okay.
And so, for, to expand your conversation into a larger discussion would be something I'd be more than happy to do offline.
Okay.
So, because there's many different avenues for getting that information to the proper people. And so, this is just one avenue for, you're right, a very small amount of federal dollars that are available. But as I, I believe that, you know, together, you know, I can take your comments. I can get them back to the right people, and it's a start.
Well, unfortunately, I've emailed, I went to the mayor's press call, I've gone everywhere, to every meeting, which is why I wasn't sure if I was going to speak tonight, because I feel like my words aren't being heard amongst many other hundreds of people, maybe even thousands for all I know. They're not fully being heard as to how we can, we can do better as housing providers with the support of the city in order to prevent homelessness, and then, you know, the, these monies, you know, not being allocated appropriately in order to support those efforts. That is all. I just wanted to definitely say.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bonita Barnes? Brandon Scott? Chanel Briggins? Christine Norman? Ashawn Varnaba? Ella Coats? Lawrence Thompson? Gretson Switzer? Joanne Boykin Thurston? Joseph Riggsby? Kanida Ivy? Tiana Ryus? Leslie Horton? Marie La Taku? Mark Randolph? Mary Sells? Mengestu Kama? Nicholas, Nicholas Honore? Olivia Farrell? Robert Warren? Ronald Coles? Sheila Tyson? Simon Wetzel? Sylvia Randolph? Belinda Featherstone? Fenella Crawford? Warren Stevenson? And William Borum?
Yeah, four people online.
Okay, were they one of the names I called? All right, then let's begin with the people that are in the room, and then we'll move to, anybody else in the room would like to testify this evening? All right?
Miss Vessels, he's in B. You have to let her know.
Your name?
Miss Vessels.
Miss Vessels, would you like to speak? Miss Vessels, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Sean.
Sean, would you like to speak next?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening, thank you.
I think she didn't know how to unmute it because it shows that we're on mute, but if you want her to go, I can wait.
All right, Miss Vessels, would you like to begin? Thank you, Sean.
You're welcome. She has to push the microphone button.
Miss Vessels, you can begin speaking.
Well, I'll go until she figure it out, if that's okay.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. I'm a Washingtonian. I've been in DC all my life. My concern is with the, the woman that was speaking with her concern earlier is, in Ward 7 and Ward 8, I live in Ward 8. I notice a lot of the luxury buildings that are going up. They price over the market where a lot of voucher holders can't afford to live in those places. And I don't know if that's a concern with housing, or are you all aware of that? Hello?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was, I was making sure that I, you had finished. Yes, we are. We are, for tonight, we are taking all comments. And so, we want to hear what, you know, what you think. And, and so, what we will do is we will put that into our comments and present it back to leadership and to HUD.
Okay, so I do have another question that was a concern. I went to one of the housing lease meet and greets, and I found out if you are a new voucher holder and you don't find a place within a time allotted, you lose your voucher and you have to go back on the waiting list. So, how will they start addressing that? Because in this case, a lot of people got on the waiting list because they needed somewhere to live or needed assistance with living. But that is running short of, if you don't find somewhere to live within the six months, then you lose out. So, are they going to start addressing that issue or try to revamp it? Because it's not that easy to find somewhere.
Thank you. What I can do, your questions are very specific to the Housing Authority. So, what I would like to do is, is ask you to put your, I'm trying to figure out how to do this. Can you email me directly your questions? All right, Sharon is going to put my email address in the chat. And then, if you would email me directly, I will get your questions answered or directed over to the Housing Authority.
Okay, thank you.
You're so welcome. Thank you for your comments. Miss Tyson, would you like to speak? Miss Tyson, we are unable to hear you if you're speaking. All right, Miss Tyson, I'm going to go on to Miss McNair. If you would still like to speak, just raise your hand, and after Miss McNair.
You, you just unmuted me, dear. You got to give me time. It wasn't unmuted at first.
I'm so sorry, Miss Tyson.
Okay.
How are you today?
Yeah, this is Sheila Tyson.
Yes, ma'am.
Everybody's talking about who they are, but I'm a native Washingtonian. But let me go through this real quick. I see a lot of money that you're spending on AIDS. I don't know what the percentage of people in DC that get this rapid housing, all these people seem to have drug problems, AIDS, health problem, get all the money. But those of us that do not have those kind of needs are not being addressed, particularly long-term residents. I'm a native Washington, I'm a senior. We know rent is very high in DC. And majority of the time, the development the DACD partner with exceeds the people's income in Ward 7 and 8. We need to defi- I like DACD to define affordability. Don't give me HUD's term, give me DC's term. What is affordable? Many times, you have to throw that word out, we are doing affordable housing, and it doesn't include us. So, I need DACD to define that. Years ago, we used to do that. We knew what affordable means. But today, I don't know what you're talking about. Also, I like DACD to look at tiny houses. There are all kind of different type of tiny houses that are affordable. Would H-PAT be a program that we can use affordable, tiny houses under? We need to really look at affordable, I'm in a senior building. If I can live in an apartment, I can live in a tiny house. And many seniors can, and many single people can. So, I'm kind of going that way with the tiny houses, because the rent in DC is just exorbitant. And yet, DACD keeps partnering with people who are making, creating housing, but not for us. Back to that lady who brought up the housing providers, not enough money being spent on small business people who own four units or less, or let's say less than 10 units. It's always these big developers that get the money. We need to start concentrating on these small business owners who own property throughout the city, who really need a lot of work done to it. I think we need, we spend too much on development that exceeds the people's income in DC and not enough on these small ones where we can get a lot of people in. All of a sudden, I'm meeting a lot of people that got housing vouchers. Even people, you know, in my age who've been waiting for years. Seniors can find something, but the ones who are not seniors are finding it difficult to find housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Miss Vessel? Miss Vessels, would you like to speak? All right, now Sharon put my name and number, or not my phone number, I'm sorry, my email address, if you'd like to send in a written inquiry. And then, I can put in my work phone. If you would like to call, you can dial area code 202-442-7200 and ask for Kellyanne Morrow or Sharon Brown to take your testimony. Before we close the hearing, is there anybody in the room that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come on up. Mary's bringing you the mic.
I thank everyone for participating today. I'm Renee Uvey Willis-Siphon-Wilson. I'm an educator in Washington DC. I teach science, technology, engineering, and math. And I'm finding that some of my students, as well as my husband and I, I'm retired Army, he's retired.
I'm retired Army, he's retired post office. We have a house that's in Ward 7, that's in that middle egress before you come down the hill going toward that creek that's at the bottom, going toward Natty Helen Burrows. What we're finding is the bottom of our house is taking water because of degradation of that creek bed back there. I'd like more information about what you all are doing about the infrastructure for the legacy houses that are in DC. What they did was they put up a giant apartment building on that egress of Minnesota Avenue. And they had to put some piping in, and had to move some things around. So, us that own homes are taking more water than we used to before they built that structure. And each day that I walk past that structure, coming from the metro at Deanwood, doesn't anybody, it looks like, even living there at this point. It looks like it was a money turnover and a money grab. I'm not seeing any habitation for that particular building. However, my infrastructure has been damaged for my legacy homes some 80 years. And I'd like to know what you all are doing for protections for legacy homeowners while you're putting in new real estate. The infrastructure piece is what I'm interested in. Are there grants for us legacy homeowners? Because literally, we're taking water. And my house is going to slide down the hill.
Thank you for that. If you would please come see me afterwards, I'll be able to take down some information and get the resources to you.
Thanks.
You're so welcome.
Sure. Two more people online. Unknown, they're muted. It's unknown, but they're muted.
If you would like to speak, your name is listed as unknown on the team's chat. So, but please go ahead, you're unmuted, and you can speak. If you would please state your name, that would be helpful. Miss McNair, did you have something else you'd like to add? Okay. Hearing, no further comments. I'm going to close the public hearing. If you would like to send us a comment, you have the two options of my email address and phone number in the chat. Or this slide also allows you, gives you the information to email opm dot questions at dc.gov. You could also write directly to Director Green at DC Department of Housing and Community Development, 1909 Martin Luther King App Avenue, Southeast, Washington, DC, 20020. In addition, we will hold a second public hearing on the annual action plan on August 5th at 1:00 PM in this room, and it will also be online. So, if you, and you can get, you can receive the action plan at dhcd dot dc dot gov. If you today go home and read the plan and you have more comments that you'd like to make, then please send them to us or come to the hearing on August 5th. After that, we will, our next public hearing will actually be on December 19th, and it will be for the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. And that will be going over fiscal year 2024. I'm sorry, 2025, on year. So, next two hearings, August 5th to go over this plan, and then December 19th to hear the accomplishments that these funding made through fiscal year 2025. Thank you very much. I will be around for a few more minutes. If you'd like to come up and talk to us, please do so.